This is a live mic check, one, two, three, four, five.
We are on the air.
All right, welcome to the Kenny Buckport Planning Board Meeting of October 16th. And first order of business is attendance.
Six of November, right?
Six of November.
Six of November, yes, whatever I said.
I guess the sixth of November.
Okay.
We have four people tonight. I know Nina was not feeling well tonight and George had to be somewhere else. And of course, we lost Neil is no longer a planning board member. We're waiting for a new person from the selectmen. So this, a quorum is three, we have four, so we're all set. Larry, obviously you're voting.
Okay.
Now, approval of minutes from the last meeting from October 16th. I didn't see anything.
I move to accept the minutes as written.
Second.
All in favor? It's a shame, I always like to find one really funny one that I joke with her about. Okay, this brings us to Hidden Pond.
So Steve Doe from Sibago Technics, thank you for hearing us tonight. I know I gave you information fairly late. My goal tonight-
By the way, never again, guys, fairly late, we're going to be stressing the seventh day when we say, hey, we're gonna bring more men. Anyway, go ahead.
Okay. So also with me tonight is Matt Page. He is with Main Septic Solutions. I figured Larry might have some questions.
I have some questions, yeah.
Good, so I can't answer them, so I brought him along. He's the expert on the system.
Okay.
I think what I would do first is I'll go through the hydrogeological study that was done. I don't know if you've had a chance to read it or understand it.
I did get it yesterday after all.
I'm sorry, Tom. Did you read it?
No.
I read the electronic version.
Okay.
The electronic, I did get the electronic.
Okay, so I'll kind of summarize it. They do have some conclusions in there or recommendations. I have talked to Ed Basset about them. And I'm gonna make some different recommendations that I think the board will be more comfortable, you know, as a condition of approval. Because again, if you haven't read the report, they're kind of a vague or kind of a continuing investigation that I don't think- I as a board, if I was on the board, I would want something a little more solid. So let me kind of go through what they did and kind of what their results were of that, of that study. In the study, they looked at two things. They looked at the septic system, where the nitrate plumes are going, is it gonna be contaminating wells? And then they also looked at the individual wells. They studied the wells on Hidden Pond property. And then they looked at the wells on the Oxplow Lane residents that were closest to it. And tried to get an understanding, is there any connection between these wells to each other? You know, what's the drawdown on these wells? You know, is there any connection? Is there any connection of the septic waste getting into these wells? So that's what the purpose of the study was. So I'll use this plan here, which is in your report. This plan shows all the wells on it, and you probably can't see it from there, but anything in blue is a well that's being used. These pink wells are wells that we were proposing to do up in here. This is our septic field over here, the one for the big one that we're gonna be pumping to. These are septic fields on the abutting lots. And so this, this blue mass coming out of it is the nitrate plume, once those, once our system is fully charged. So you can see this plume is going away from the lots. In other words, it's going away from any wells over in this location, which is what the original design was, was for. The report goes through and analyzes the original study that was done. They disagreed with it a little bit. But in general, the plume is going in that direction. There's a couple of recommendations is, is to add some additional monitoring wells down this to confirm that that's where the plume is actually going. And we would agree to have those monitoring wells installed. And I think there's also some test pits to determine what's the overlaying soil on bedrock to determine is the plume actually being decreased as it goes away. So those are recommendations in the report. I'm not gonna talk about the other septic fields because those are going in different directions. Essentially, there's kind of like a ridge right here in the property that things go, on this side, on this side of the ridge is flowing that way. Everything here is gonna flow in this direction. So that's with the septic field. So there's no issues with the septic field in relation to the wells. The, the actual wells themselves and trying to study what they're doing. Because the concern is, is for Ed Basset, which he has his well right here. And he's experienced, the well is at half capacity. And he also has a fire pond which is down about four feet, so it's very low. And I don't know if this is something that's just happened this year or if this is a continuing-
It's an ongoing.
Ongoing problem. So, so he's really the only one that has the concerns about the well. All the other wells seem to be working fine. For the abutters, all our wells are working fine. We do have one well that never did get a yield on it, and that was located right here. It's just an abandoned well. We don't, we don't use it. So part of the study was to find out, is there any connection in the bedrock where one well is feeding off another well? Now this line, this plan here is, is the geologist looks at a lot of different documents, different maps. They look at different aerial imagery. And all these red lines are fractures in the bedrock. So if you're drilling a well, for instance, you'd like to have your well right here because you got a lot of different fractures coming in, so you got a better source of water. And I've highlighted the wells, so, and they also told me that the, the bedrock in this area is very, very dense. In other words, one well, for instance, we have a well that's over here, is yielding 40 gallons a minute. This well was completely dry. So the bedrock is very, there's not a lot of connections or fractures between wells. You could drill a well, you know, 40 feet away from another well and maybe get three gallons a minute, and the other one maybe 40 gallons a minute. So there's not a lot of interconnectivity. However, this well is being pumped like every day during the summer. This well was feeding the fire pond. And with Ed's well going dry, the geologist thinks that maybe there's some connection in the bedrock between those two wells. So as this well is drying down to fill this pond, it's drying down the water table. Consequently, maybe lowering his pond and maybe lowering his well. We can't be sure of that, but it's an assumption. They wanna do some tests. Some of his recommendations are to do some additional testing, cammering down the wells, trying to see where water is coming into the wells and see if there's any connections between them, which we would agree to do that. The other thing that may be impacting Ed's well is that in the original approval, we sleeved Ed's well and we sleeved Cerise's well right here. So we put sleeves in them to try to prevent any contamination from the septic field getting into it. In the process of putting those sleeves in, we may have sealed off some of the fractures that are up high in the, in the well. So that may be causing a problem. I think the end result is the recommendations are doing these tests over a two to three month period during the summer when both our wells are being used. I think as a board member, that's a long term and doesn't really have a, an end solution or a timeframe. I think the end result of that, and he talks about in the report, is to fracture, hydrofract Ed's well. I don't know if you're familiar with hydrofracting. It's where you, you pressurize the well with water and it, it opens up more fractures to let more water in to the well.
Fracking is evil, you know that?
Well, it's, it's a different hydrofracking. It's done with water. It's not done with chemicals or whatever they use, so. That seems like that would be the end result, so our recommendation, or what we would maybe propose as a condition of approval, is to require us to hydrofrack Ed's well. We would stop using this well to fill the pond, because I think that becomes a problem. Even if we continue with the pond filling from that well, I think there's still potential to lower the groundwater. So what we would probably do is maybe use this well to feed three of the cottages. It's a lot lower usage. And then to fill the pond, because this is a fire pond, so we wanna make sure it has water. We would run a line from this well over here that has the 40 gallons a minute. It's only feeding three cottages, I believe. We would run a line from there back to the pond to feed that, to feed that pond. That well is kind of in its own little watershed. There's a huge wetland that's feeding that, so there's a lot of water supplying that particular well that's way over there.
So you're gonna designate all these wells? And you got, you got actual numbers on them?
We do have numbers for them. So this is well number 12. I'd have to look at the report, but that, I think I have that in, in my briefcase of what well number that is.
So the supposition is that the high yield well currently is not connected by fissures to the well that, that we're worried about?
Correct.
You're proposing a hydrofraction. Is that-
Correct. Yeah, because they did water readings in all the wells.
Yeah.
And Ed's and this one were a lot lower than the other wells, as far as the water level on them.
So, you know, fracking is an interesting concept. So bed, is this, is this bedrock granite or-
Granite.
Granite. Okay, so once you frac it, do you prop it open or what's gonna prevent it from sealing back up when you take the pressure off? Because you, because you overpressure, you frac the formation.
Right.
I know about this.
Good.
So when you take the pressure off, there's a tendency for it to close back up unless you prop it open. So you gonna put in some propping?
I don't know how they profit open.
Well, all I'm saying is if you frac it, you may find there's no change if it seals back up.
Okay.
I mean, because the permeability of granite is zero, so you actually have fissures in there.
Right.
So and all the, all the fluid goes in the weak part of the formation.
Yep.
And, you know, hopefully, something, something, yeah, stays open, but, you know, if you don't prop it open, it will close up.
I think one of the other things, let's say we have an issue, let's say we hydrofrack it, we get zero results.
Yeah.
We would agree to drill them a new well.
Oh. How will you know if you get results from the hydrofrack?
We would do the, the cammering of the well to see where water is coming in.
You're saying the fill rate is measurable and-
Yeah, we can do, they would do all that. I talked at length with Cliff Lippett.
I'm not, I'm, I'm asking, I think you're, you're overestimating my, my understanding here. I'm really just asking, what, what are you measuring? I measure something today and I say, hmm, I have a problem. I'm gonna go hydrofrack it, and then I'm gonna come back and I'm going to measure something again and see whether or not I've helped. What is the thing that-
Oh, that we're measuring?
Yeah, that determines whether or not hydrofracking has worked, however long it lasts. I understand your point, Larry.
Yeah, I think they would do a pump test, see how much water they can, you know, draw down, how quick does the well get drawn down?
Okay.
And fill back up again.
Yep.
So they could do that before they hydrofrack it, and then they can do it after, and if it's getting more water.
I'm good with that. And one, one other comment. Is this a belt and suspenders type of thing here? My first thought was, oh, fine, you're gonna stop. The theory is that there's connectivity between these two wells, the one that's being used to fill the pond, heavy usage, and the one that's being drawn down.
Yeah.
And if you stop doing that, why isn't that enough? And you're saying, well, I don't know. We're not really sure they're connected, is what I'm gathering. So we're gonna do two things and hope that between the two things, you got it covered.
Yeah.
And if you don't, if neither of those work, then the backup position is you're gonna drill, drill a new well.
Say we do a new, drill a new well or we get SW coal. I think SW coal will be part of this whole process to, you know, kind of make, provide us with recommendations. If the hydrofracking doesn't work.
I was trying to frame a condition in my head here. It's like, if then-
I would say then new well, if you wanna get something more specific.
Or some mutually agreed to alternative at the time, or some, some such thing, but yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. If you don't have any more questions on the study, I think that was the result, oh, yeah, that was it, because I talked about the monitoring wells from the nitrate field, you know, down in here. We would do all that.
Are you, are you still proposing to do some studying to determine if the fissures are connected? Are you sort of putting that on the-
I don't think, I don't know if we really need to do that, because we're-
I don't think I need you to do that as, as an individual, but it sounds like you're not, you're not relying on that. You basically said, here's a, here's a theory, I've got some proposals that if that theory is correct, ought to fix it, and as a backup, I'm gonna go drill a new well.
Right.
One other thing, that, in terms of what happens if, you talked about, I think you're proposing to add some ongoing monitoring for the, for the plume. What, what happens if that plume is expanding out? What, what type of backup do you have on that case?
Well, that's where we get to the denitrification system. And, you know, I got Matt's here and he can talk about it. So for the septic system, the thing that you're concerned about is a nitrate level above 10 milligrams per liter at the property line.
That's defining the edge of the plume, you're saying, is that metric?
Yeah, I believe that's what, yeah, so, and that's where the water quality comes in, you know. So right now, we have a monitoring well here, and we got one here. They are getting high nitrate levels there, and then in Cerise's well. He's kind of perplexed as high, why she's getting high nitrate levels, because the plume is not going in that direction. And the groundwater, you know, the whole surface patterns are not going in that direction, so. But I think some of these additional tests is to kind of just verify his, his assumptions in the report. That the plume is going in that direction. But getting back to the denitrification system, we're gonna add this tank to the septic system, and that will bring the nitrates leaving the, the system down below 10 milligrams per liter. So you got pretty much clean, pretty clean water going into the septic field to begin with.
Yeah.
So.
So the increased monitoring is, I mean, you might argue that it shouldn't be necessary, but you're gonna do that.
If maybe we do it for a year or a couple of years just to confirm the findings?
But the, but the reason you're doing it is, well, part of it is to figure out this anomaly as to why you're seeing nitrate levels that are inexplicable. Because the plume isn't going there.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna answer-
It's not gonna illuminate.
It's not gonna, it's not gonna shed any light on that, I don't believe. His, his theories in here was maybe it's, it's fertilizers?
Yeah, alternative source.
Some alternative source. It could be lawn fertilizers, it could be garden fertilizers, you know, that's, that's getting into there.
So, so I might reframe my thought that says, you're gonna do this monitoring in order to confirm that the denitrification system is working properly?
Yep.
Will it do that? Will it allow you to confirm that the levels have been reduced as they clearly should be? You're adding the denitrification system, yes?
We are adding that, yes.
So those well, those new, the existing and the additional monitoring should show the effect?
It should. I mean, currently, they're doing tests. I wonder maybe answer if it's once or twice a year, and those reports are going to the town. Honestly, I think we ought to at least continue it, you know, for a couple of years, but at some point, if we're finding there's no increase, to stop the testing. Whether Warner could do that or we have to come back to the board to ask for that, because it's currently a condition on previous approval.
Understood. Thank you.
So you're gonna summarize this series of, I got three recommendations or conditions. You gonna summarize that for us to make it easy? Make sure we get all the well numbers correct?
Yep.
That'd be great.
You're gonna do that now, right?
Well, well, anytime.
I'd like to do it right now.
Oh, okay, all right.
So we're gonna perform, and I, it's actually in the report. If you wanna copy it, I can show you where it is in the report.
Okay, I got it electronically.
Or I can give you, do you have a copy, Ralph?
There's a copy of the report.
Got a mark on it?
Yeah, right away.
Okay.
Go back to recommendations. Page 10.
All right.
Okay.
So it'd be, it'd be this, this first one here.
All right.
Perform acoustic, and then- I don't think we need to do the data loggers, which is the second recommendation. That's where they were just monitoring the wells to see if there's a connection, but the first one was doing the testing of the wells. The second one is use hydro, or hydrofrack the Basset well.
Hydrofrack the Basset well only?
Yes.
And does that, has it well number? Or we just say Basset well?
I just say Basset well.
Okay.
His house.
All right, I got it. Basset well only, all right? Okay. So, so you're, so use hydro fracking on the Basset well only to improve the performance of this low yield well singular, right?
Correct.
It's one low-
Well.
Okay, so it's not plural, okay?
We would discontinue the use of well number 12.
Okay, hang on, so you're gonna discontinue?
That's not in the report, that's me.
Okay, all right, that's okay. So discontinue use of well 12?
For filling the fire pond.
Okay. Fill the fire pond, okay?
Let me find what well we can use for. Use, I believe it's well number eight. I'm pretty sure it's well number eight. Or maybe we had the well number eight, 40 gallon per minute well, to fill the fire pond.
And that is, that well eight actually provides water to, you said, three of the units already?
I think it's one or two, now that I'm looking at this map.
So that's basically just increasing the demand of that well?
Correct.
So we'll be dedicated to the fire pond, it's just going to be additional demand?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
We will, and this would be under the wastewater disposal system. So that's it for the wells.
Well, except you were gonna drill a new well if the fracking didn't work.
If some condition, and that's what I, I've still, how, how is, how is he gonna frame that in some measurable way? If, if the fracking is unsuccessful, how, how do you quantify that? Then, then you're gonna drill a well, but I don't, how are you gonna determine that? If the homeowner doesn't like the results, is that, I mean, that's a little broad.
Right, if, if the hydrofracking doesn't-
It might be okay, but-
Provide increased yield.
But how much yield that you need? How much more?
I mean, I think three gallons per minute. Well, the geologist was telling me one gallon per minute will, will serve a household. I don't know what your well, if you have any idea what your well is yielding now, yeah, and there was no information.
Or what it should yield, yeah.
Yeah.
There must be some rule of thumb here.
So do you wanna say, do you wanna just give it like, if the new well, or sorry, if the fracked well fails to satisfy normal household demand for a month, then you drill a new well? Or is a month too short? Six months? I mean, I guess you're just basing it on household demand, right?
Could we go at it another way? We believe the well is insufficient, no, the flow is insufficient.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there a percentage wise improvement that we would agree is appropriate? Or is that, again, this is not, not quantifiable? Are we looking for a 10% improvement? Are we looking for 100% improvement? I don't have a feel for that at all.
Yeah.
I would think so, yeah. I mean, what would a home inspector do here?
Right, how many gallons per minute, you know, that's acceptable.
And then the real issue would be without drawing the water surface down too far, I mean, I guess you're gonna monitor the elevation of the water in the well or something?
Yeah.
So there'd be some correlation between water, free water surface in the well and satisfying the household demand? Something like that?
Yep. I think part of the testing that we would do is gonna kind of give us a baseline.
I mean, because when the pump's on, the water surface will go down, right?
Right.
But then the pump goes off and it fills back up.
Fills back up.
And apparently, so now is the household demand not met? Is that what's happening?
It's met, but just barely. I mean, you, you have to wait, wait, wait.
Oh, you have to wait, okay. So instantaneous, so without, you know, well, sorry, based on instantaneous demand. So, so do you have, do you, is there like a period of time do you have, would you ever flow the water continuously for 12 hours, for instance? Something like that? No? No? I'm trying to quantify, I'm trying to figure out how to quantify, so.
Didn't you say something about pump down earlier?
That's what, that's part of the testing, they would do a pump down and see how quickly it fills back up. To see what the yield is.
Did that tell anything, if you did it before or after?
That's what they would do, yeah.
We're just trying to get a.
Don't know what the numbers would be, that's all.
That's, that's what we're saying.
We're trying to get something we can put in finding effects that's quantifiable.
So, so I think, I think you're back to your first one, that would meet normal household usage.
Yeah.
Measurements before and after to show improvement, to be sufficient, we're assuming now that it doesn't. Otherwise, we're not, we wouldn't be fracking the well.
Apparently it does, see, that's the issue, apparently it does meet household demand, but you have to wait for the well to fill back up. And then you pump it down.
And it used to be better.
Yes.
Used to be better, so the question is, so, when the well comes on, when the pump comes on, then how long does it take for the well bore to fill back up?
Right, so you'd, you'd think that this test, this pump down test would have a.
I mean, the best case scenario would be the outflow would equal the inflow, so there would be no drawdown.
Yeah, but that's probably not.
Probably not going to work.
Yeah.
Is there a seasonal component to this problem that's being addressed?
I would suspect so, but I'd kind of look to head.
During the summer.
Yeah.
So I think there's the answer to Larry's other question is what's the period that you're going to look at this over?
I don't know if it pumps down much in the winter, does it? It freezes over and.
They don't use the pump in the winter, they shut it off, you know, it's shut off now, so when they close, they shut. Yeah, it's a seasonal thing.
So I think you need to capture that in terms of the, you know, the timeframe over the course of.
So.
Next year, you've got the problem solved.
So, so if you monitor this through next September?
Through to September?
Well, actually just for the next year.
Yeah, yeah.
Monitor for the next year?
Yeah.
Okay, but then it's the quantification of what we're looking for. Monitor, monitor the well performance for one year from this meeting. Okay?
See that the.
And the criteria.
See that the performance improvement is sustained.
Is to satisfy normal household use with with what, with one, with no waiting period, no?
No, I think that goes with normal household usage, there's, there's some criteria that we're not on top of.
Yeah, we're normal household use.
He has to wait a long time, that's not normal household use.
Yes, normal household use, okay.
I, I think we're going to get into trouble if we try to do more than.
We don't want to be too, too.
Normal household use, okay, full stop, okay, and then, and then, and then what?
Only one of us is a professional engineer.
Who are we going to, who's going to define normal household, I guess there's some, must be some EPA standard or something, huh?
Again, I would look.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know that you're going to find a, you know, that you're going to find a flow number that says, you know, you has to provide it X. At least not that I'm aware of, you know, whenever we, you know, when we look at well reports, you know, we, you know, we get a report, but that tells us what the quality of the water is, and it's, and it's less about the quantity of it. You know, the only time we deal with a, you know, with a quantity, you know, a flow rate perspective is on, you know, some homes and subdivisions that have the, the 13D system requirements. You know, that's the, the interior sprinkler systems. At that point, you've got a flow, you know, you've got a flow requirement, but even then, I mean, there's, you know, I mean, there's storage tanks that, you know, that can be put.
Sustained it for a time.
Exactly, will be put into place, you know, to, you know, to provide the same amount of yield that's needed, so, you know, I'm not aware that you're going to find a specific number that says, you know, you know, minimum flow is X.
Okay, how about this, so monitor the well performance for one year from the date of the fracking, of completing the fracking, and then the criteria is to satisfy the normal household use, but we're going to rely on the homeowner to advise us, okay? The homeowner should advise us whether he's being impacted.
Can I, can I just slow, slow you down for a second? Because it seems to me that you're not even going to monitor this for a year if you do the fracking and you don't see any improvement in the current situation of this pump down test, again, we're not quite clear what the criteria is, but we believe the criteria has to do with flow rate and, and the ability to recover from, from a drawdown. So if we see an improvement, then you're monitoring for a year to see that that improvement is sustained.
Yeah, but see, the improvement could be like 0%, 5%, it could be very low.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, you're right, and, and I think that's where the normal household usage is.
As defined by the homeowner, that's what I'm saying.
Just say normal household.
Normal household use.
You don't.
Okay. You don't want to say homeowner to advise, huh?
No.
Okay.
Like the easier, just drill a new well.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll work with that on this too, I mean, it's been a good neighbor and, you know, we want to.
So, we're just going to say monitor the, monitor the well performance after fracking to confirm an improvement of the inflow performance and.
Sufficient to be normal household usage.
To, to be sufficient to satisfy normal household use.
Yeah.
Still pretty.
Monitor that over the next year.
Okay.
There's some softness to it, but.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Now, did you have questions, Larry, on the subject of denitrification?
I do, yes, yes, whenever we're ready for that. One, one of my, one of my questions was about monitoring, but I have others, so, okay. Okay, let me, let me just write this down. To determine the improvement in inflow performance.
So I did find, you know, on the state's site that they have recommended minimum flow rates.
Okay, there we go.
But it's all based on the well depth. You know, so you have to look at the well depth and, you know, because it assumes a certain, you know, a certain level of capacity that's within, you know, that's within the casing, so, you know.
Maybe the answer is to deepen the existing well.
Well, in order to give the, you know, in order to give the number, you have to know what the well depth is, and then it, and then the well depth will give you the recovery.
But I don't think we need to put that number up here, it's just comforting to think that there, there is.
There is a number.
Information or set of numbers, an equation.
Right.
So I'm going to say, monitor the well performance after fracking to determine the improvement in inflow performance, whether, whether the improvement in inflow performance is sufficient to satisfy normal household use, full stop.
Yep, yeah.
Okay, all right, that's what I'm going to say, all right. Okay, so, so I got five, five conditions here. Right? Number one is this acoustic tele viewer bore hole survey, then two was the hydro fracking with this condition, three was drilling a new well if the hydro fracking doesn't work, then four was discontinue using well 12 and then use well to, to, to fill the fire pond, and, and then number five is use well eight to fill the fire pond. Those are my five, five conditions that I recorded.
Yep.
Yep, that's number three.
That's number, yep. And then if we get into the, so that's all I have for the well issue.
Okay.
And then if you want to get into the septic.
Yeah, before, before we leave this, this situation though, so. Okay, if, so after this meeting, so if you decide to drill a new well, you just do it, you just get a permit from Warner and that's it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. We don't have to see that again?
Oh, we, we don't issue, no, we don't issue permits for wells.
Oh, all right, okay. So if you drill a new well, do you advise us that, of the new well location? I mean, how's that work?
Advise Warner that it happened.
Okay, all right, okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
Okay?
So I believe you have septic questions.
Yeah, I have a few.
Okay.
So you want to do that now?
Yeah, I think I'm probably going to refer to Matt. You've seen, you, I assume you've seen the design?
Yeah.
One of the things that we did, we changed.
Great, thank you.
Originally we had the cottages, two cottages were draining to a septic tank.
Yes.
We're getting rid of the tank and it's going to be a grinder pump.
Great, oh, smokes, okay.
And Matt can explain why we're doing that at this point.
Okay.
Hi, gentlemen, Matt Page from Maine Septic Solution, representing FujiClean, the exclusive distributor for FujiClean in Maine and New Hampshire. And so it looks like we are attempting to remove some point source nitrogen from this project, and I would be more than happy to proceed with any questions you guys have at this moment.
Could you just give us overview of what the, you know, what, what it looks like?
So basically, using the FujiClean system, we're using aerobic and anaerobic action to remove the nitrogen and nitrates. So basically, we are feeding the nitrogen bacteria, thus extracting it through the anaerobic process. In some literature that I included with you, it's somewhat laid out for you there, but, you know, we kind of get breaking down into anaerobic hydrolysis and kind of moving from there.
Okay. Okay, so I, I did, I did see that the, apparently the, I looked at your, appreciate the sketch here, you have the new 2,000 gallon septic tank, then you have the FujiClean, then you have an existing OxyPro treatment module, and then you have a blower, and then you have the, the drain field. And then you're going to, you're going to insert the FujiClean between the new septic tank and the existing OxyPro.
Correct.
Okay.
That is the intention.
So. So, one of my first questions goes back to the sizing, okay? Now, before we get into the details, so the, the basis for the sizing was table 4A, which is for dwelling units, okay? So when I looked at table, when I looked in the, you know, the standard, and I looked at the table 4C because this is for 10 motel cottage units, which I thought was like a hotel, okay? So that's not such a big deal, but then, if you look in table 4C, it talks about gym, you know, gymnasiums, okay? And, and it says for a gym, then it's eight, 10 gallons for each user, and so you've got eight users, sorry, you've got 10, eight, eight gallons per minute and users, I guess, eight gym users at two gallons per minute. So I didn't understand where the two came from, I thought it would be 10, but the significance of this is, instead of 1,996 gallons per day, I came up with 2,060, okay? So, we don't, I don't want to debate this now, and I know this is something for Warner, but as far as I can tell, it's not much of a increment, but it could affect the setback distances, okay? So, I'm just saying, it's a question for me, I don't know how this works, so.
So, I am a licensed site evaluator, that is not my design. So basically, when we started looking at the main subsurface wastewater disposal rules, and in that particular section stating a gymnasium or a use of a gym, they're more or less thinking about a why or a shapers or something like that, and not the application where it's part of what the facility's process is. So they're not taking into consideration that you're going to have, you know, someone who's staying at one of the cottages is going to the gym, using the shower there and not using the shower back at their own cottage. And that's kind of how, over the past 15 years or so, I've framed most of the subsurface wastewater disposal rules gallons per day as they go. So for the, that outlier gallons that you came up with, really that's more or less the way I would approach it, is that that is a GPD for a gymnasium or a gym or something like that, not necessarily for an ancillary gym or workout area for a project such as this. And please feel free to correct me if I'm, if I'm off or wrong in relation to that.
He's correct, and there, there's no shower facility, it's really just a room with exercise equipment.
All right.
And there's a bathroom, that's the extent of the building, so.
All right, okay, got it. And then I know, I did notice also that you're going to add these EcoTrans grinder pumps, but then I saw somewhere else that table 6A talks about a sep, a separate tank for each two bedroom unit, 750 gallons. So, I don't know, it seems like you're substituting grinders for tanks.
Yep, and so basically going back to standard subsurface wastewater disposal rules at 750 gallons per two bedroom unit, realistically, when it comes to the FujiClean unit, there is no septic tank required. Per state rules, as stated in the letter that's included, there's no septic tank required, so we've pretty much scratched that off in relation to what is needed. So now they have put the grinder pumps onto the proposed or existing cottages, pumping to more or less that septic tank and feeding into the FujiClean unit.
Okay, all right.
But again, one of the benefits of the FujiClean unit is a single tank alternative, so whether it's your two bedroom house or it's a 2,000 gallon per day system, we're a single tank alternative.
Okay. Okay, so then I looked at the configuration here, and, and I'm glad you mentioned, you know, I could see the FujiClean was anaerobic and, you know, aerobic system in a single tank. The, my, my, I guess, I guess my concern is that the conversion of ammonia to nitrate to free nitrogen is, you know, I mean, it's a kind of a, kind of a delicate process.
Absolutely.
And I know that, you know, it's easily upset, and so I, I did have one, I had a couple of questions on this, one is that, okay, it seems to me like when the, the waste leaves the OxyPro, it's going to be full of oxygen, you know, it's going to be well aerated if that's going well, but it seems to me that, that you should, that there should be a sample point somewhere downstream of the OxyPro to make sure that, well, so you have, so you have some knowledge about the concentration of nitrate going to the, the drain field.
Absolutely, so you most certainly have, not only on the third port of the FujiClean unit, we have an opportunity to take point source sampling there, then either the outlet fall of the existing OxyPro or the distribution box itself. So having a pull sample from, if not all three of those points, but at least one. And that, at that point, you would have an idea of what was going on either within entirety of the system or how much nitrogen was being removed from the FujiClean itself.
Okay, so there's actually a sampling program to actually take samples?
We most certainly can, I mean, I know that we work with Water Quality and Compliance out of Wascassit. They do all of our O and M service for all of our tanks in Maine and New Hampshire, and they also own their own lab, they do all of our testing that's necessary. They work for lots of large municipalities also, and that would be who we would be, A, using to do all of our operations and maintenance for this tank, and then if additional sampling were to be needed, we'd most certainly be using them or SJ Cole or whoever they decided to use.
Can I, can I just butt in with a sampling question?
Yeah.
Do I understand correctly, though, that the, the plume sampling is all downstream of all of these units, right? And so I think what I would have thought is that these sampling ports are an important part of saying, given that you don't get, you, you get a surprise at, at that sampling that's already been committed to, now you have a way of diagnosing the upstream point of where it's happening.
As compared to non-point source.
That's what I'm saying, I think you need to know what goes into the drain field, what, what the quality is coming out of your treatment process before it goes in.
But you only do, you only need to know that, I mean, you need to know for intellectual curiosity for sure, but you only need to know it here if you have a problem. If, if you confirm through your sampling downstream that the plume, the concentration in the plume is going down, having introduced this system, that I would offer that you don't have to go upstream and, and start sampling the, back at the individual cottages and grinder pumps.
Not the cottages, no, no, just that, just downstream of the OxyPro 45, just immediately upstream of the drain field.
And if you do that, do you have to do anything downstream then, would that?
Yeah, that's, that's another one of my concerns, yeah, so I'm still upstream of the drain field, so.
I don't think it's an issue right here.
Okay.
They're all very much simplistic testing, whether it's point source sampling and grab samples from the tanks themselves or the distribution box.
So you want to add a condition that says the, that the sampling program includes sampling at the outflow of the, of the FujiClean?
So, when, well, okay, yeah, not only, not only the FujiClean, but, but there's going to be more, potentially more conversion in the OxyPro, so, so, so. So can we say a condition would be to, for what, for a periodic sampling, periodic, like once a week, once a month, once a year?
Yeah, if not once or twice a year.
Okay, so, but you need to start, you need to have a data point right, right when you start up, right? Need to have an initial data point.
Maybe a month or two after they open, after you get the thing running.
Yep.
And then maybe one at the end, like in September, you know.
So at the start and the end of the season.
June 1st, beginning of season for.
Could be June 1st and then. Could be June 1st, and then maybe do you do it during the peak season, say, August?
Yeah. August, or do you push it to the end, September?
Yeah, September.
Branch those out, grab both ends.
I was trying to keep it simpler.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed.
So, sampling, okay, on the FujiClean, and downstream of the OxyPro, right? Because you're going to be there sampling, so it's just going to be a guy getting some samples from two different points.
Yeah, two, if not, yeah.
Or more.
Minimum two, yep.
Okay, but it's upstream of the drain field, okay?
And, you know, for our reference, too, you know, Main Septic Solutions, we most certainly pull random grab samples off of our FujiClean units to check just the parameters and how they're functioning. That's something that we do fairly frequently, so.
Okay. So then, then we have the drain field. And so the thing that occurs to me is, whenever I think about nitrate removal, I'm always left with the idea that there should be, there could be a need for some recycling somewhere, you know, from downstream of the OxyPro back to the Fuji, I don't know, because, you know, you're trying to maintain all sorts of levels, not only oxygen, but, you know, the nutrients and the bacterial activity and temperature and alkalinity and, so, you know, and then I just see this as a straight-through system. There's no recycle involved, and maybe you don't need it, I don't know. But then, when you get down to the base of the disposal field, it's almost like you need to have some, not just wells, but maybe some pore water samplers, you know, at the, right at the exit, right at the, just immediately adjacent to the very end, effluent end of the drain field. I don't know.
Yep, and so...
Because, what you want, because I know that there's a lot of stabilization that occurs in the soil, right?
Absolutely.
I know that's going to happen.
Yeah.
But you don't know how much that, what's happening.
Well, now, if you start to look at taking a sample actually around the existing drain field, as this is a concrete chamber system, and so...
Yeah, just immediately downstream.
Yeah. So, for example, where would you pull that sample?
Well, wherever you're, I would say wherever the effluent...
But the effluent is, again, I'm looking at someone else's design, but that effluent is feeding into an area which consists of, I mean, just at this scale, I would say it is eight rows of 12, is that plastic chambers in the cluster array, is that correct? Bear with me one second. Again, I'm looking at someone else's design. Yeah, it would just be, it would be something that's not normally done, I guess would be the way I'd put it. It is rare that, in the 15 years I've been doing this, that I've ever seen a sample taken around an existing drain field, unless there was some outlying major issue.
Yeah, I think if I could add to that, one of the things in the report, and I think it gets more to the nitrate level, is to put the monitoring well further down from the field.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you've got to get the soil a chance to, you know, help break down anything that's in there. You know, just like we have monitoring wells here. I mean, there's no neighbors down here, so there's no impact to anybody downstream anyway. The nitrate plume is decreasing, and it goes in that direction, so I don't see the benefit of testing it coming out. But, you know, again, in this report, they talk about putting, you know, some monitoring well probably right there.
So, do you have one monitoring well, or?
It says, it says additional monitoring wells, south and west of System A.
Add two monitoring wells?
I would say, we'll just go with two.
In addition to the one that already exists?
There's two that exist. There's one here and one at the property line.
So there'll be four altogether?
So they say four.
So, add two monitoring wells to the four that exist.
To the two.
To the two, sorry, to the two that exist, okay? Okay. Okay. And again, would those be sampled?
Those would be sampled.
June and September?
Same time.
And would that be every year, in June and September?
Yeah, for, until we determine that there's no increase, you know, that there's no contaminants.
Okay.
So maybe we continue it for two years.
Okay. And then would it be one year after that, or not?
What's the current obligation?
Yeah.
I think it's continual. There's no end date.
Okay.
I think we'd come back to...
We'd come back if we find.
Yeah, let's just leave this as we're adding to the existing program.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, okay.
And then if it comes to a point where, you know, three years in a row, we're getting nothing.
Yeah.
Come back and just call it off.
Okay.
Okay, so after three years, and you still get nitrate, what's the plan? Then what?
Well, I guess if it's not a contaminated level, you know?
Oh, yeah, 10 milligrams per liter?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. But what if it's still 40 or 50, or?
Four or five?
And something's wrong.
No, 40 or 50.
Yeah, and there's a whole bunch of other issues, and at that point, we're, at least, we would be at that point monitoring exactly and knowing what the nitrogen levels were coming out of the system, given that we were already sampling in the FujiClean, and also on the outflow of the OxyPro, and then we'd be looking at other things that are within the environment that would be increasing that nitrogen. Because it's not going to magically increase, if we're at five milligrams per liter coming out of our system, for example.
Oh, yeah, sure.
And we're now seeing 15 at the property line, there's some other issue.
Yeah.
That doesn't involve the wastewater from this particular project.
Right, right. And of course, that reinforces the need to take your samples upstream of the drain field, as it comes out of the OxyPro and out of the FujiClean.
Correct. Those two points being one of the better options. OxyPro doesn't necessarily have quite the nice, clean place to pull a sample out of the outflow. The distribution box would be potentially a great option there. And then the FujiClean has a clarification chamber before it leaves the tank itself that we're able to do, you know, really nice grab samples from.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, so like, with the, so, you know, I'm glad you're going to add some sampling wells, and then some sampling, and increased sampling for one year, in addition to maintaining the current program. Sounds great.
Okay.
Yep.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So, any other questions from the board?
Thank you, Matt.
Or are we reopening the, you have more?
Nope, I have no more questions.
Okay, so I think I can reopen the public hearing at this moment, if you'd like to speak. I'm sure our public, I mean, it's only fair.
You guys got a nice bound, I didn't get a...
You get a what?
I didn't get a bound link.
I got a clip.
Well, I see. One of the questions that was asked earlier was about the water problem, how long it's going on and so forth. And I said, "It's ongoing." It is ongoing since Hidden Pond started. Okay, it's just a clarification, and I didn't know if it was clear or not, so. One of the, when I went through this, I made notes on the report, it looks a lot, but I didn't do a lot of notes on the sheets that are in there. But there are some things in here that I agree with, and there's a few things that I think I have to have clarified. The very first page of it talks about the determining the two wells similar to the ground water connection, whether it's a study that needs to be done or not, and they agree that, yes, it is. So that's an agreement. Also, the testing, complete and testing performed to make sure that the water is going to be brought at the levels that it should be. So there was no problems there. The one, and the second part, and what I'm looking at is the Sebago letter, cover letter that went to you, and under number two, it talks about the tanks near the cottages, which I know from what we just said are not going to be tanks, it's going to be a grinder. Well, my question is, is it a gravity feed system, or is the waste being pushed down to that feeder?
I come to the mic to talk. It's gravity to the grinder pumps, and then the grinder pumps, it's a force made to the field.
Okay, all right. I was just thinking that, you know, some of that sitting in the pipes over the winter, et cetera, could cause problems and whatever. But if it's being forced out by a pump, then there should be no problem with it. Okay. When I got down to the coal report, there were a number of things that I agreed to, or agreed with, and a couple that had clarification. On this page of your notebook, one thing, there are two things, actually, three things missing. And it is, there are two vernal pools that are located, one behind my house, and the pond in the front is a vernal pool. And where my well is should be located on that. It shows two tanks in their field, which I don't see it here, but this, I was just looking at this right here. And I don't know what you call that. The two tanks that are there, only one is being used right at the present time, is that correct? Or maybe a trickle from something else, but mostly, primarily, it's one tank is being used.
There's the primary field, which is this, that's the only thing being used. This other rectangle is a reserve, so if this, if this ever fails, a new system could go there. That's the purpose.
Okay, so I'm thinking field, I'm not thinking tanks, my mistake. So, we're referring to a 2,000 gallon tank or something for the new system?
Yeah.
How's that going to affect those two fields? Will it all go into, again, the one that's being used right now, and still have a secondary one?
We have a backup system put into that, so that if they had a problem, it could be taken care of. Yeah, so if we open up your, this system right here, so this is the new septic tank, the 2,000 gallon septic tank.
Okay.
This is the new FujiClean that Matt talked about.
Gotcha.
This is an existing, so everything goes through here, and this is, this rectangle here is the only thing being, where the field's being used. This area is a reserve.
It's a reserve, okay.
And it will never be used, most likely.
Okay, so that's, thank you. Now that I got the word "tank" straightened out, I think I'm okay on that one. "All works to be done under dry conditions" was a statement that's made by, I believe, the state, in a page that looks like this. And what do they consider dry conditions? Is that now? And I guess it's the conditions under which all this work will take place.
Yeah, and that's more, and Matt can maybe answer that, but I think that's more for the field construction, and the field's already in. So this really is just installation of tanks, so that shouldn't impact what they're doing.
Good. These are easier than I thought it was going to be. Okay, that one is just a statement that came out at the beginning of the coal study. Photolinear, I understand that one, that's been cleared up for me. Soil types. It refers in this report to types C slash D, type C, and type B. And it also says that the Oxplow Lane properties are type B and C. Is that just dealing with gravel size and things of that nature?
Yeah, exactly. So, again, so again, not my test pits or results, but basically, we're talking about the depth eliminating factor within the soil condition. So, the way the main subsurface wastewater disposal rules are set up, we have classifications from zero to nine inches, nine inches to 15 inches, and 15 inches, so on. So, those basically are stating where the depth eliminating factors are within the soil profile and test pit that are given.
Okay. And what is it looking like in the new, in that field area?
I do not have that in front of me.
Just thinking about the capacity of that field compared to what it is and what it will be.
There's no source at all, is there?
I know it refers to A, B, and C, but that really didn't help me that much.
It's probably the 2,005. Let me see, you may talk about it in the D O T report.
I think, isn't it in the wastewater disposal standard?
It's in, it's in the subsurface wastewater disposal. So, basically, a C category soil condition that you're dealing with. So, if it's a 2C, which would mean it's greater than 15 inches limiting factor in that soil. If it's a D, then we're dealing with inside or outside patrol, we're dealing with, folks, so if we're dealing with a C category soil, then at that point, we're dealing with something that's 15 inches or greater to a limiting factor within that soil. So, which would be considered good soil conditions.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. In your report, in the SW coal report, page four, it refers to, in our understanding that at this time of measurements, Site Well Number 12 and the Bassett Well on Oxplow Lane were either being used or had been very recently used, resulting in water levels lower than would be expected. There is nothing there that we were doing that was anything other than normal. And so I under, because here it says, it implies to me that it's something more than normal. And I don't think you folks were doing anything more than normal over there either, so there may be a slight issue there.
Well, pump, so, yeah, I don't know why he mentioned your well, but Pump 12 was being used, or Well 12 was being used. So that's probably why it was recently used, so they couldn't really determine water levels.
Okay.
Because it had just been used.
Is that, that's the fire pond?
That's the fire pond, yeah.
So you had just filled the pond, if you will, when they tested it, to see?
They just shut it off like a year or two before, so...
Okay. How many gallons does that take? Does that take a lot to fill that? Must. It has to take quite a bit.
So, just a question. I initially heard Pond 12, for the fire pond, Well 12, and then you changed it to, is it Well 8?
Right, that's the proposal.
So I have a question on this fire pond. You have to keep filling it up every day? Is this just an open pit? Is it lined or anything? I mean, what about trying to...
It's a lined, it's a lined pond, it's got a clay liner in it. And I, my understanding is they fill it just to keep it for aesthetics. They try to keep a uniform water level versus letting it go down, you know, they just like a full pond, is my understanding.
So does the clay liner need to be repaired, if they have to keep filling it up?
I don't believe so. There may be a leak, there is some bedrock intrusions that came into it, and it may be leaking out of those areas.
I'll leave this piece till the end, and it has to do with the mounding. I'll come back to that one, because that one, to me, is beyond my, beyond where I am. Photo, on page nine of the SW coal, it talks about photolinear interpretation, suggesting that the wells be in a different location than when, than what you folks originally indicated. Looks to me like it might be a better, looking at that photolinear picture, it looks like it's going to be a better location for them. And the information about the drainage from, away from my property, in all cases, is always a welcome, a welcome thing. Not likely, since only, oh, fertilizers, fertilizers on the field that's presently being used for drainage, might be involved in adding some nitrates to the material there. And yet, Cliff talked to me and said that two inches of soil will pretty much clean that up. So I don't know how much of an actual issue there is with that. So, it's a possibility, but it becomes questionable, according to Cliff. And our wells were sleeved, in the report, it says that they don't know when they were sleeved. They were sleeved before the project started. And I'm sure somewhere in the data of construction, they will talk about the expense of having a well digger come into the properties. That would be the date. Because I don't have the date, but that's when it was. And you have been adding the conditions, which I'm happy to see, because one of the things that I had here, under the information for recommendations, was that the fracking be down in writing, and that the opportunity to get a new dug well, if that doesn't work, should be in writing there as well. So that's a, that's a nice... So that's a, that's a nice thing that, that's going there. We agreed on hydro fracking, if that, you know, if that's what, what has to be done. Will my well, well still be sleeved when they do that?
The sleeve stays in.
Reports, that's to be continued, no mention of back, backup field, now we just talked about that. Discontinue well 12. Okay, and, and I think that the continuation of the monitoring is an important thing, and one of the things that adds to a little bit of confusion is that they can't monitor year round. They can only monitor during the summer. So what happens during the winter, it's another whole different issue that goes on. Hopefully that, now can't really tell what's happening, because the pond will freeze, and, but the water pressure should stay. If it's working the way that it should, I should not lose water pressure during the winter time. We'll see. I, I'm hoping that that's something that's going to happen. Interesting question about keeping the, the veins open, if you will, hadn't thought about that. Okay, as I said, I had good things and, and other questions to be clarified for me, and I think you've pretty much covered them this evening. It also says in here that this should become, recommendation should become part of the, and the work being done should be done prior to the acceptance of, of the project, and I would hope very much that that would be the case, that we, we've always done, we've worked together, mouth to mouth, hand to hand, and, and I'm, I'm hoping that, that either, either in writing, it will be there, we should be able to take care of it. Okay?
So, so is that a condition then? So, so, so.
That was very, that was on the very first page or something like that.
So, the work associated with installing the Fuji clean and fracking or drilling a new well, as well as installing the monitoring and, monitoring points and monitoring well, would all be done before the project is accepted?
Yes.
Before you get it?
Well, can't be, it, it would have to be accepted that it's going to be done, I think, because you can't accept it before it's being done, or can't do it before it's accepted.
You mean approved by?
Approved, yeah.
Before they get occupancy.
Before you get an occupancy permit.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, that's, okay.
So that's what you would check to make sure that what's in here is being done.
Right.
Okay, that's good.
Correct.
Okay.
Wonderful.
So I don't think we need that, that's not a condition, that's just.
If you, if you could explain, one of you, please, con model versus whatever, I have no idea what the heck that's all about.
So Ralph, what's the answer?
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Or you want me to try? I understood it up until the con model. SW coal.
Well, okay, I think I'm gonna, since you were it for public, I'm going to close the public hearing. And now, does anybody, obviously, I'm not going to have a finding of facts prepared right now, regardless of what we might have discussed in the past, but. Any, any more questions?
I just, I just have one question, so I'm thinking about fracking the well, so what happens if you frac the well and the flow rate goes to zero? Because that's happened before.
They're gonna dig a new well.
Then they, in a hurry.
I think we already agreed with that. If it doesn't work.
So, so your backup plan is to have a rig standing by?
Okay.
Well, you're gonna have a rig on location during the fracking, you have some pumps, you know, okay. Okay, it'll work out great.
Okay, so I think we're out of questions.
Yeah, I'm out of questions.
Wow, that's amazing. Okay, so, does anybody have a motion on this?
I'll move it to, to the.
It's already been moved to the board, you're moving approval, I believe.
Okay, okay, so move to approve the application?
I would second that.
Okay, those in favor?
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
And go forth and sin no more.
Exactly.
Seven days.
Thank you.
I'll go back with my tailor too, thanks.
Okay, now if I can find my agenda, oh yeah. Okay, item two is Jim Logan doing the McMahon properties, and we got an email from Jim saying that he was still working some details, I guess, the, this is the one with the shared, the idea of the septic tank would be shared, or temporarily that this leaching field would be on, on the other property until such time, whatever. And we loved it so much that Jim is off trying to figure out how to, to either change the lot lines or convince the guy that he has to take a new septic tank right now.
So we're deferring this?
So it's, I.
Until it provides, you know, until it provides.
Indefinitely deferred?
We're just going to defer it till we get data from him, seven days in advance of a.
Correct.
So, so we make sure he understands the seven days also.
Yeah, so we'll pull it off the agenda until we get.
Yeah, I think that's, that's perfectly fine.
Yeah.
Which brings us to Mark Messer.
That's the messer.
And you got your stuff in at the seven days, so.
Yep.
You're on our, our good doobie list.
That's right.
Except for the letter from the, the fire chief, but we're happy to see the letter from the fire chief, so.
Well, I'm glad you got it, I'm glad you got the map as well. Good evening, I am Mark Messer. So at the last meeting, we, I think we had a good discussion, a good back and forth on the road width, some good suggestions were made. There are two things you asked me to do. One was to go back to my surveyor and, and redraw, redraw the map based on what we talked about. So they did that. Luckily, I was sweating it out, because I thought that we met every two weeks, it's been a long time, so, so I guess we had, it's been three weeks since the last.
Twice, twice a month.
So I had.
There's a third Wednesday.
So two a month, right, so.
And fifth Wednesday.
So I had an extra day or two to get that done. So we did the map, and the other, the second thing you asked me to do was to talk to the chief about the map, basically, and that, to see if he was okay with that. So, he came out to the site, Warner did as well, we met, we had the, we measured, we talked, we looked around, and you can see from the letter that he's fine with that map.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the, he has two conditions, one is just that you're going to presumably update, the hammerhead is, is to be maintained by the owner, which is, which will be you of the lot out there, or is it part of the road maintenance agreement?
Yeah, Warner mentioned, and I, I agree, that it should be part of the home, the homeowners' association maintenance agreement.
Right.
It's part of the road, because it's part of the road.
So that's something that needs to be ultimately added to your.
Yeah, that's easy, yeah.
Yeah. So that answers the, then there's the deed restriction against further development.
Right, because of the width.
I'm not sure I understood the answer to the first one. You, you got it, but I, I didn't.
He's gonna add, they have a.
He's gonna add what?
They currently have a road maintenance agreement.
What, what are you going to add to it, Mark?
Well, if Tom wanted to answer, he can, but I.
No, I'd like, I'd like to know what you're gonna do.
We're gonna add a amendment to the road agreement.
Yeah.
Maintenance agreement that says the last two property owners are required to keep the hammerhead cleared of snow and, and maintained, follow trees, that kind of thing.
Rather than just adding it to the road maintenance?
It'll be added to the road maintenance agreement.
Right.
Which is.
I would think this would just be part of the road maintenance.
Yeah, I.
That's what he said.
Yeah, that's.
Not part, not, not something that the, that two owners have to pay for.
Okay.
Rather, rather just, you know.
That's, that's better.
We pay for plowing, the road maintenance, the HOA pays for.
Right.
Plowing the road.
Tom, I think you're making an assumption that's maybe not true. I, I think the current road maintenance agreement does not say that collectively, they do this, it says various people do various things.
Right, to a point. It says that the road will be maintained and plowed, but there's no mention of a hammerhead, maybe that's what you're.
No, it, I, I thought you said last time, there's no mention of who exactly takes care of that maintenance, that collectively you just kind of get together and it gets done.
It's written down who does it.
Yeah.
But.
And who, who, who does it?
I don't, don't have it with, it's the last two property owners does it.
The last two.
I'm not sure what you're asking.
How many property owners are there?
Three.
And who's, who, who doesn't do, do any of the road maintenance?
The first one.
Who's that?
Just the wee wells, they do pretty much their driveway, they do the mailbox.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They do the front of the, the, the beginning of the road, I mean, the reality.
So two, two of the.
If you don't mind, the reality of it is, we just all kind of do it. It's not the same as the road maintenance agreement, to be honest. The reality is, we just all do it. The Sharps have a plow truck, they have a four wheeler, I have a snow, a snow, a snowblower, I have someone who comes and plows, we just, it just kind of gets done.
I, I don't see any reason to change that. I just want to be able to look the fire chief in the eye that, and says, yeah, you, you gave us.
I thought this came up last meeting, but yeah.
It, it did, and I, and I walked away confused.
Okay.
So, so I'm trying to straighten that out.
Okay.
For, for myself, I apologize for, for taking your time to do that. But, but the fire chief is asking for an agreement in writing as to who is responsible for this maintenance, in writing, you know, so.
So that's.
So what you're saying is, you're going to put in the road maintenance agreement that the property, yourself, and.
Is it the Sharps? Yeah, or we can leave it the way it is.
So the, I'll try to help clarify this, you know, because this, you know, was part of the discussion that I was involved with, you know. One is that, you know, you know, we have a good understanding at least of how, you know, how the current residents out there take care of the road, you know, I mean, that's pretty clear, they figure it out, they make it work.
Yep.
You know, my understanding and, you know, what we understand is that, you know, when banks require a road maintenance agreement, you know, there's this distribution of maybe who pays for what. Now whether or not the property owners, you know, follow that, you know, is a whole other animal.
You're not going to police that?
I'm not going to police that, you know, but at the end of the day, we know that it gets done, you know, but what it does provide is it provides for some protections for future owners that may not have that same level of relationship, you know, that there's a, that there's this road maintenance agreement that goes, that goes along with the road. Are, you know, and, and when I say are, I'll, you know, collectively, the chief and I, the concern was is making sure that the, with the addition of the hammerhead, that it just be included in the description of the road maintenance agreement, that, so that future owners are aware that, hey, there's this hammerhead back here that was approved, was requested and was approved as part of the, you know, part of this overall road, and that it needs to be maintained, merely that it get into the description that, that this was there, and it could be a.
As a pullover area.
And a pullover area.
And a pullover.
He's asking that both of those items be added, be mentioned.
That's correct, yeah.
Be mentioned in the road maintenance.
And the road maintenance agreement could, you know, yeah, as, as a suggestion, you know, could include this survey plan as a reference, you know, so that it identifies, here's what the road is, here's where the pullover is.
I'm happy with that.
Here's where the, what the hammerhead is.
That would be done, yeah. No specifics, just add, make sure that, hey, there's two new things. Sure.
In the road.
Yep, okay.
I think having the survey plan included in that as exhibit.
I like that.
Just helps clarify it.
That's a good idea.
You know, everybody has a copy of it, everybody sees the plan, everybody knows that there's, you know, this is the length of road, and that there's a hammerhead at the end that also has to be maintained.
In the application we just disposed of, at the very end, somebody asked the question, when are these conditions checked? And it was easy to answer, because there was a, an occupancy permit that was going to be given, and at that time, the various conditions could, could be checked to see if they were met. What, what's the counterpart to that here? Is there any future permitting that has to be done?
As far as for, for maintenance, or just the road widening in it?
The road widening and then maybe subsequent home building.
Yeah, so typically, you know, with these types of applications, once it goes through a board approval process, we would then issue a separate land use permit for the road work, you know, that's associated with that. Now, you know, the typical process and within, you know, within the ordinance, you know, these improvements are typically required to be in place before, you know, we're able to issue permits or permissions for any other, you know, for any other work.
Yeah.
And I think that's, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but that was one of the questions that you had was, you know, was, question was regarding the issuance of the building permit for.
Yeah, it goes, it happens before then, I can't sell the lot to another party unless the road is.
Right.
The actual lot, so that's, that comes before.
So there's a little bit of a, I think, a little bit of a chicken in the egg.
Isn't there, but there would be a second chance to do that? If you, if you wanted to say, you're going to be doing all this home construction and tearing up the road, and you really don't want it all to be in place only to go beat the tar out of it, what about an occupancy permit? Wouldn't be granted until the road was, met the fire chief's requirements.
And that's something that I think is within the purview of the board, you know, if you want to put, place that, if you want to place that level of condition on.
Would you be willing to, to let him have the, the construction work be done while the road was in its current condition? Rather than spending all the money to get the road to be beautiful and, and wide and all of that, because we're going to have four houses on it, instead, build the fourth house, get all the, the heavy traffic off of it, and then make the road right before you grant an occupancy permit on that new house. Would that be something we would, we would allow?
That's, I mean, that seems reasonable, is that within our.
I mean, it's not ti, it's not typical, yeah, I mean, typically, we want to see the road, you know, we want to see that the, you know, that the road is, you know, the road width is in prior to the issuance of the building permit, but it's.
Well, well, and that's my concern, I mean, the road, the, the changes to the road are really to improve the loss prevention ability, the fire guy. So you'd want to have that in, I think, before you invested any more money in a building, see. So I wouldn't want to put a whole bunch of, you know, anything, construction out there without having the ability for the fire department to get in there.
But as long as no one's going to live in it.
But nobody's living in it.
No, it's still, it's still a loss, it's still a loss issue, still an insurance issue.
Ah, ah, you're saying it's not loss of life, but it's loss of property.
Loss of property, yeah. I mean, I would require.
You're saying the insurance, you, would, would, wouldn't, would be denied to you? If in fact, you've basically haven't got the road in, in the situation.
My understanding of that is from, something else is, if it's not plowed, insurance won't cover it. If, if a fire truck can't get into a house in the winter and it's not plowed, but if there's a straight line for one truck to get to a house, especially if it's not occupied, it would be covered by insurance.
Right.
Yeah, but wouldn't you want to upgrade the road to meet the recommendations of the fire chief before you took the risk?
Maybe not, not put the final coat on it or some such thing.
Yeah, you might want to put the final coat on.
Yeah, put the final coat later, but.
After the folks.
But you'd want to have the ability.
That's fine.
I guess that's a question, are you, are, are you paving the road, Mark?
No, it's gonna have a, it's gonna have a, it's gonna be recycled pavement.
Okay.
So close.
Yeah, I was just clarifying, clarifying that, so there's not a top coat, you know, so it's not like.
So I think the answer is if it gets dug up during construction, you know.
Yeah.
Then what?
They'll spoon it.
Okay, so the road, we're, we're going to follow a normal procedure, the road will have to be improved before the building permit is.
I mean, that's, you know, that's a, that's up to the board, you know, whatever condition you want to, you know, you know, whatever condition you want to impose to that.
If we put nothing special on that, it's the way it would be.
Right.
That's correct, yeah, if you didn't, if you didn't address it, then the, the standard operating procedure is that, you know, the road improvements would have to be, you know, in place before the issuance of, of a building permit.
And I'm happy with that.
Just like, just like how we deal with the, on the sale of subdivision lots.
I only brought it up because it, it was raised by Mark in his initial letter, and I just wanted to.
But doing the final coat would be fine after.
No, no, it sounds like we're, we're not willing to do that.
No, well, just to be clear, I mean, when, you know, I'll, I'll go back, this isn't a subdivision, but, you know, process wise, whenever we deal with a subdivision, it's typical practice that we don't require the top coat to go in, that we, I mean, when we're dealing with a subdivision, we just hold money aside in, in a separate escrow to cover the costs of the top coat, because quite frankly, I mean, it's, you know, you really want to get the construction vehicles in and out of there, let them beat up the base pave, and then do the top coat, you know, once you're down to say, you know, the last uh, and then do the top coat, you know, once you're down to say, you know, the last couple of houses in there is typically what we, is typically what we do.
Right.
So it wouldn't, doesn't sound like it would be any different here, I mean, I think a condition could be that you allow for the base material to go in, uh, to achieve the width, you know.
The final configuration.
That's right, and then your final, you know, whatever your final, um, you know, top dressing is going to be, goes in, um.
Yeah, make the road in the final configuration before building the construction and then put in the final top coat after, at a convenient time afterwards.
That's right.
After construction's complete.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's the normal procedure, right?
Correct, yeah.
So we just go with the normal procedure.
I mean, and you're not requiring a, you know, you're not requiring a bond or anything like that for this work, so it doesn't, that, you know, that doesn't really matter.
Basically, we're saying the road improvements, with the exception of the, the, the top coat, need to be done before the building permit is granted, as, as per normal procedure.
Yeah, that's typical.
That's perfect, okay.
Yeah, great.
So the, the beginning is 12 feet wide and then the balance is 18?
Sixteen.
I'm trying to read.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Yeah, this is very, it's hard to read, but it is 16.
I've got a big one here if you want.
Nope, that's good, thank you.
And, and so. The bypass is existing 12 plus a 12 foot bypass. Yeah. In, in between the two covers.
Okay.
Yeah, and we did confirm that that area worked.
Number two?
Topographically, that it was a, that it was a logical location.
Yeah, he's already agreed to number two, right?
I haven't heard it, yeah.
Restrictions.
I had a question on that. It says the property your new house is going on is deed restricted.
It will be, it's not now.
Right.
Should, I mean, it really should read that it's, you know, the, you know, proposed, you know, the, the parcel that's shown as being proposed would be restricted against further subdivision. Technically what it, what that probably ought to say.
And on this survey map, which, which parcel is that?
That's the, the hashed, you know, the one that has the blue hash marks.
All of that, and that is identified as a separate parcel right now?
No.
Oh.
It's surveyed out, but it just hasn't been deeded yet.
No, it hasn't been, yeah, it hasn't been divided out yet.
So that's convenient, so, so at the time you're having the deed done, you will add this restriction against further subdivision.
Well, that's what I did, I made the mistake doing that with the Sharps property, I ended up paying taxes for eight years for nothing. So that's why I'm waiting.
Until?
Until it gets closer to the action.
Yeah, do it after April 1st.
Against what action, I'm sorry?
I, I deeded, I deeded out legally the Sharp lot, maybe six or seven years before I sold it.
I see.
So I paid property taxes on that lot for no reason, really, I couldn't.
So you're saying, when, when are you going to, um, declare this, get a new deed for this?
Well, I got, I have to add some new language here that I'm hearing, and, and so probably the next few months.
Oh, okay, yeah, I was just curious when you.
Okay, well, I'm going to open the public hearing. No, and Russ is not going to contribute any public, so, uh, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do we have any further discussions or are we ready to, uh, hear a motion, please?
So to accept?
To approve.
Approve the application, okay? I'm moved to approve the application.
Five seconds, all in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, and Scott is, uh, going to do the, uh, FOF for next time. You don't really need to be here next time.
Okay.
As you may remember, other than the day after, you have to come grab it from Warner and run it down to the registry of deeds.
Well, thank you very much, all right, thank you very good.
But you, we always welcome having you here, though.
Sure.
Two of us.
You know, we have a vacancy if you want to come back.
I'm good.
So you're going to do, do this road work after mud season next year, basically?
Um.
I mean, all things going well?
I don't know, maybe this winter, I don't know.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, and that brings us, finally, I'm sorry that it's taken so long, not your birthday and everything, but. Anyway, uh, item 190, 903, Kennybunk Port Conservation Trust, continued initial review. So this is still the initial review, next time would be, would be the hearing, so.
Uh, so good evening, everybody, my name is Russ Grady, I serve on the board at the Kennybunk Port Conservation Trust. Um, I'm one of a number of volunteers helping steward this project forward. Um, you met Jamie, uh, last month. So before I jump into an explanation, I want to share with you that, um, the documentation submitted last Wednesday, um, based upon a slight change in design, changed, and I placed a copy on your desk today so that it's updated. The, um, I'll provide a little bit of background on the plan and why, um, we've made a change, so.
Is that what this is, Russ?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and I did bring extras expecting, um, that we might have guests, and I'll be sure that, um, our butters get copies as well.
Good.
So the trust comes before you, or came before you, everyone has them, Warner, I put them on in front.
Okay.
Yeah, those are extras. So the trust is, is coming before, uh, the planning board for a parking area on a parcel located on Guinea Road, it's parcel 16 dash 2 dash 1E. That parcel, along with a number of others, um, was purchased from the Steels, uh, years ago and collectively have been called the Edwin L. Smith Preserve. So there's a chunk of it over on the other side of the road. Um, you might recall, there was a vote for, the town gave land to the trust as well in that area. Um, there's even land that's a little further down by, um, uh, the Stimson's on the corner there, another parcel there. So there were several parcels, the deed, um, points out which one is specific to this one, but you'll, you would have noticed that the deed is, is full of many parcels as, as part of this acquisition. We, um, so a number of different activities happen on the parcel 16 dash 2 dash 1E. Um, there was discussion, um, during the last meeting, um, that the field is hayed, and it is. If that classifies it as agricultural use, I guess, you know, that's fine, I wanted to be clear, and I, it might have been in a note, the field's hayed by somebody who does it and gets to keep the hay, we don't make money on it, we pay the field so that we don't lose it. Um, it's a really pretty field, and in fact, there's a gorgeous batch of lupins along Goose Rocks Road that's often photographed. Other things that occur, um, like many other trust properties, our people go for hikes or walks. Um, our education program, um, sometimes takes kids out to the Batson River, um, and we do some snow shoeing activities there as well. I brought to light that this is and could be an added bonus to a parking, um, um, opportunity across the street. We're not here specifically for what's happening across the street, but we've also, and I want to provide the background, we've worked with the town and the Steels over the past couple of years to, um, post Guinea Road, to request that they tick it if people park where we've asked them to post. Um, because of the hump in the road, um, and the Steel's concern, and sometimes they turn in her driveway, sometimes they park, you know, in, on, in her dad's old place. And so we've worked with the town, nobody has, has complained, the town hasn't complained, but we thought, you know, if we build a lot that can serve this area over here where we have hikes and, and field trips, um, heck, where the guy can drive his truck to unload his, his hay machine, it could also serve a, as a way to alleviate some of the congestion on Goose Rocks Road and make the Steels happy. The first design that was submitted was done so to keep, to be just extremely simple. It was to position an entrance and an exit, um, sorry, moving around. That would provide for the greatest sightline distance from the hump of the hill on Guinea Road to, as Ann would say, the corner, um, down at Goose Rocks Road. We met with Ann and, uh, I'm losing her sister's name, um, several times, um, in one of the field and explained it. She did raise the concern about headlights. She would know better than I, I don't, I'm not out there at night and I don't know many people that are, it's a, we're dawn to dusk. But out of sensitivity to her concern, went back and I, I gave Warner a call, I'm like, what's keeping us from putting an entrance on one side where she would like it, and an exit on the other, so that we could have cars come in away from her house and park?
Yeah.
Sightline distances are maintained, um, so there's still plenty of room and there's room for the crosswalk that, um, that, um, Mike Klaus had asked for. So the new design that, that is there in front of you has an entrance and an exit. The only difference between what Ann has proposed in writing and what we have here in a design is the number of spaces, we kept it to 10. The spaces are 13 by 20 instead of, um, 10 by 20, giving a little more wiggle room.
Yeah.
That increases the lot coverage by point 001 percent.
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah, um.
Oh.
And, um, because of that, and, and in order to kind, I think to encourage proper flow, we would have a very small enter sign and then a very small exit only sign. Again, we won't have somebody there policing the area, nor would we ask the, the police force to do it. But if we could encourage people to come in the way we like it, so that, again, headlights and traffic is not facing Ann's house, that would be wonderful. One of the other components, um, I heard some discussion on the berm. When meeting with Ms. Steele, we said we'd be happy to plant whatever you would like us to plant there.
Yeah.
Um, and she likes to sit up in the window and look down to the corner and, and, and look at the beautiful view and watch life go by. So we didn't come to a conclusion as to what we would plant, but we said we'd be very willing to do it, so, um, having heard nothing, we're still very willing to do what she would like us to do, but what we're proposing is that the soil used, um, that would be removed for the, the rock and what have you, would be bermed up on her side and, um, it would be grassy. And if next year she'd like us to plant a rhododendron or a flower or what have you, we'd be happy to do it. But the berm would be, I think, sufficient enough to, um, to, you know, kind of block some view of a vehicle, um, but all, but maintain her ability to look out to the corner. It's something she, she had mentioned often and it's, it's, it sounds important to her. Um, there's a copy of, uh, of the overall, um, lot, um, and, um, and it might not show in black and white unfortunately, um, but the tree that kind of stands alone in the field near the road, to the, um, south side of that would be where the lot would be located. There's a topo map put in there, it's a fairly flat area. I mentioned the berm. Blessing. Our initial application was not for any signs or, or, or lights or things of that nature, again, trying to keep it as simple and natural as possible. Um, but with the change of an entrance and an exit, um, it would be marked accordingly. And at the, at the back end, you'll see some, uh, one, a, um, a back of an envelope drawing and then one, um, a fairly detailed sketch of, of a recommendation. So in a nutshell, um, we're seeking to add this parking area as an accessory to, um, that parcel, 16 dash 2 dash 1E. If it must be considered change of use because as people go and hike as a community or enjoy it as a park, something we're open to discussing, or if it's considered to be an accessory to the agricultural use because a guy will park his pickup truck there and throw bales of hay on it, um, that's something that could be considered too, I suppose, but. So hopefully, um, the additional, um, points and then new draft would satisfy some of the questions that were pending, um, and I'd be happy to answer more.
Just thinking about the use thing, I think we have this problem with all of the, you know, with, you know, with most of the trust places because, you know, they, I don't know that anything has been approved as a conditional use along the way. I think the, the park that you were involved in, the new thing, we did discuss it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I guess since we're a lot, we've been paying a lot more attention to uses of late, it's probably good to consider this one of the two possible additional uses. I mean, it's, agriculture is.
Permitted.
Permitted in farm and forest, so that, that's easy.
I, I, I like what, what Russ said at the beginning, that this is really a parking area that, that helps the Edwin Smith Preserve.
Yes.
Which really is a community use.
Yep.
Um, that, that, that this parcel is a part of. Uh, I, I think we're not changing.
So you're saying it's a part of an existing community use?
Community use, I, I believe, and I think you, you made, you convinced me that that was, that it's not agricultural when you said, well, no, it's, it's, no one's profiting from this, we're not, we, we're haying it to, to, to keep it usable as a field. And just, you know, I don't think we do agriculture down in, on, on, uh, in our neighborhood.
No.
But, but we have that field mowed one, once a year because otherwise it's insane.
Yeah.
Right, it just, just keeps it clean and, so, you know, part of our job here is to just clarify that this is a collection of parcels that are commonly used by, by the community and we're not changing that, but we are a- adding this structure to it, this, this accessory structure.
Or.
Parking area.
Well, I think that's, uh.
I'd like to think about it that way anyway.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good way, we can just mention it in the, in the FOF, that it's accessory to this existing wonderful Edwin Smith Preserve.
Yeah.
Community use and, uh, leave it at that. And, uh.
Do we, do we think that this is, uh, complete at this point?
I think, I believe this is complete now, yes, and, uh, I think we.
I would move that it is, that, that this, uh, application is complete. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Very nice, so, uh, that means there will be a public hearing on this, uh, two weeks hence. If you have changes, they come in seven days prior to that meeting.
I've heard that one before tonight.
Means you have seven days to make your changes.
I'll do my best to swing by.
Can I just, before you leave, Russ, this, I want to make sure that I, I have the right pages here. I have two of them, I, I think I came in with one and how, how do I identify the most current version of this?
The easiest way to do that would be on the front page where you see parking space 10 by 20, uh, don't, towards the bottom. You'll see a sub-bullet saying proposed spaces are 13 by 20.
Oh, I don't have that on this one, okay.
That was tucked in, um, it was tucked into the, uh, the paper sitting on your desk.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be the most current.
Thank you. Rev A.
And, um, and I'll do my best to swing a copy by Ann's house so that she sees it as well.
Okay. All righty.
Thanks for that.
And, um.
So, so this is, this is just.
Did we, did, did, did we have a volunteer for case manager, because I don't see it in the minutes or anything?
No, I, I didn't hear, I, I don't recall that there was one signed.
Okay, well, we now have a, a new volunteer.
Is that me?
Yeah, it is.
Thank you, Ed.
Happy to help.
With all, all that you're doing on helping George out.
I'm going to write up these conditions tonight for that one.
Yeah, you got a big one there, there's plenty.
I put all three dates for the public hearing.
All three dates?
Yeah, I mean, your, the first version you sent out only had one date.
All right, okay, right, 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 okay.
Okay, thank you, happy birthday.
What's revision four?
Okay. All right, so I need one more motion, no.
So one, well, two things that I just want to discuss quickly with the board. One, you know, there was this discussion at the last meeting about the site walk for, for the housing trust property. And just wanted to get a sense in terms of when you all would like to, to do that so that we can, you know, get that on a schedule, get that noticed. Since it'll be more than three of you walking around.
Right. Well, I'm not going to be here until, back here until the seventeenth. We're leaving tomorrow.
Okay, yeah. And, and yeah, there's, I, I don't think there's a particular rush. I mean, there's still, you know, the trust has work to do in terms of putting together the preliminary application.
There weren't snow on the ground, I suppose.
I would agree with that.
What about that?
Yeah.
Do we have before Tuesday? I thought it was this Friday, or did that one change?
It changed now Tuesday.
Great.
So you get back when, Tom?
We'll probably go outside. It's snowing.
So how about Tuesday, the nineteenth? Yeah, I mean, that's, that's fine. Obviously we want to do it during the daytime. Yeah, but we can, yeah, we can set that, we can set that, you know, at any time. So do you want me to, to propose to them Tuesday, the nineteenth?
See if that's okay with Steve.
Okay.
You know, I think I'd be able, I mean, we'll get, get the three of us. That's too much, too many already and see who else comes.
Alright, here's to the nineteenth.
Last time we talked about Steve wanting to do a little something, so I think we need to at least check with him and see.
Yeah.
Check with him.
Okay.
We've been keeping him busy on.
It's eight eight that will work.
I'll, yeah, so I'll throw, I'll throw that date out. With him. I mean, typically, you know, something like later in the afternoon. Either, you know, either earlier in the morning or late in the afternoon typically is what, what works for him.
Late in the afternoon, of course, dark.
We don't want it to be dark, yeah. But I think, yeah, if we do something like, you know, three o'clock, around that.
Perfect.
Okay, alright. And then, and then the last thing, I'll just, just pass these flyers out to you all. So the growth planning committee is doing a climate one oh one and comp plan discussion on November twenty first. So just, I'll, you know, I've got a flyer for you all. So I'd encourage, you know, the planning board to show up, you know, for that. So I think it'll be a good discussion. It's a good kickoff for, for the updated comp plan.
It's six P M. here, right?
That's correct. Yep, six P M. on the twenty first of November. Okay?
Very good.
That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Alright, so.
Motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Okay. In favor?
Okay.
Save the dates.